You're on.
Yep.
Washington, yes.
Nope.
Because he's not here tonight, so.
Okay, it's here.
Yeah, for enough to greet the dawn.
No.
That right?
Okay. And Steve, I'm hoping that the...
Did you contact?
It's all right.
Did the teachers sign on the contract?
I don't think so.
I don't know.
Oh, I think they did the workshop day. They mostly had something out at lunchtime or something. When the piece of paper was printed.
I think there was already on it.
And I asked them why, and they all said, "Why?" I don't feel the whole... Do you use that list of names?
Yeah, yeah, they're...
Probably not.
All right.
That'll be later.
Laurie, did the teachers sign on their contract?
Over here they did. I'm not sure what Steve got from the elementary school.
He did hear that workshop day or something, right?
Yes, yes. These weeks might be done on this.
And I believe that there has been a... This Christmas over coffee, but there's decent tweaking done to it.
So I'll have to hold it.
Excuse me?
I'll have to hold it.
So number 10?
Oh, yeah, 10.
How are you?
You cold?
Freezing. I was home, I was up on the couch in front of my fireplace, and I had to leave.
Oh, yeah.
It was great.
I'm new.
Yeah.
I'm going to, uh, just walk up to the office and see if the other...
Yeah.
I didn't hear what she said.
That one?
Please.
I thought you were... I don't... I think we may be fine to not take more than my own space. I've been sorting the policies for which piles they should be in.
Hi, Becky.
Hey.
That was a... I couldn't remember. I said, "What?" "Come and take like the show today."
I haven't read it down. Do you see the new baby?
I should forget.
Patty's... Oh, he's so... I can't wait to get to hold him.
Well, he's up there for two days.
I know. Patty gets back.
About how many times I read those papers?
We'll wait till Patty gets back.
Yeah, yeah. Here's your second review.
So who's vice chair?
guilty.
It's time.
I thought we'd wait till Patty come back.
Not to start the meeting or anything, but...
Although we do have Patty's stuff, so just... We waited for Patty to come back. So I guess we should get the show on the road. I mean, he's not gonna be there.
Yeah. Elaine's vice. Who's vice? Oh, Elaine's vice.
I bet that makes a lot of people out.
He might have said that because he sent me an email. Well, that's what he sent me. Yeah.
Why didn't you send me anything?
I just got it. He just...
Yeah. You could be nice and go on.
I got a couple of adjustments.
Okay.
True now.
All right, I guess we're late as it is, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. And would you believe this? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, adjustments to the agenda. Bill, you said you had some?
I've got a couple. I'd like to move 13, the RFP, off Rick Ross and our manager's here with us, and I'm not going to keep you here all night. And I have an addition. I'd like to add to 4A, it's a resignation. And number 10, I guess there's some adjustments we need to make. I'm just informed of on the contract, there's some language that needs to be adjusted. So I'll hold on that for the next meeting, so we'll just put that on the next agenda.
Okay. How far up do we want to bump so Rick won't break up with you?
You can bump it right up to right after public if you'd like.
Okay, sounds like a plan to me. Um, approval's... Approval of the minutes of Tuesday, December 15th.
I have one adjustment on the minutes. On the AOS, on the third page, there was a word that was misused. And, how exactly on the fourth page?
Is it distrusted?
Yeah, it should have been discussed instead of distrusted. I didn't distrust the budget, I discussed the budget. Not about the budget, but I just discussed it.
I noticed that, too.
For that, it's okay.
Anybody else have any? And I guess we need a motion to accept the minutes as adjusted.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as adjusted.
A second. And all those in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, 4A is resignation?
Yeah. I'll read this to you. I just got this the other day. It says, "Please accept this letter as my notice of resignation as a long-term substitute for the pre-kindergarten at Woodland Elementary School due to unforeseen circumstances as a foster parent. I need better availability, attend meetings for dates, and therefore cannot continue full-time. At this time, I gladly continue to score AOS as a pre-substitute when needed, as my availability should allow. My last day is a full-time pre-k, it will be January 16th." Does he accept that resignation of Michael...
Michael.
Michael Spencer. Michael. Michael Spencer.
Oh, I didn't know she was in there.
There's a motion in a second.
I'd make a motion to accept her resignation with regret.
Just a second.
How are we doing over there?
I have a little blurb in my report when it's time.
Okay. Hey, public?
I need a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Thank you.
I'm new to this.
That's okay, I'll help you.
Public participation. Is there anything that anybody would like to discuss that is already on the agenda? There being none. Number 13.
Okay. We were able to send on our RFP, and we had four firms who sent proposals. And I have all those proposals with me if you'd like to see them in extra copies. Uh, there were Stephen Blatt Architects, only doing the five-year projections, building assessment. Pros and cons weren't accepted, but I've already spoken to him, excuse me, and we'll have to take that on as well and find someone who can do that. Oak Point, um, and Stephen Blatt was 14 and is about $3,000 for the pros and cons in the AOS. So that's 17, basically. Oak Point, building assessment was 24,5. Enrollment study was 3,300. AOS study, 27,500, and it should be in the packet. WBRC was 24, estimated 3,3 plus 8,000 travel. And Ames Engineering was between 34 and 37, 4,500 for the enrollment and 3700 for the AOS. I did hear an independent enrollment company as well who does the enrollment studies, and we'll probably end up doing it with Blatt. And that's what he will use anyway. Probably 300 for 3,500, so that's in the ballpark, and it's at 3,000.
So the town council?
And the town council had a reading, and they accepted, uh, a order, uh, to be in order to town of Baylorsville, Baylorsville Schools for dinner, into a contract with Stephen Blatt. And various subcontractors provide the complete desired study for an amount not to exceed $20,000 total cost for charity to be between the town and the school. That was accepted by the town. I would recommend it, if we're going to go forward, that that's the best that we can do, and...
As...
I'm not sure where the dollars will come from, but we'll have to make some adjustments. We have some dollars under maintenance, and we have some dollars under board attorney one that's additional. So those are the only two places I've got anything that we can adjust.
Has either the town or the... Or, I guess, he was a superintendent, had any dealings with?
I've dealt with, of that group, I've dealt with Stephen Blatt. Steve actually, uh, architect two buildings for me in Sad 48. Oak Point, I worked with there in the process of actually designing two buildings right now. It's that what's now RSU 19 for the high school replacement in Elm Avenue. WBRC did all of our engineering studies previous to that. And Ames Engineer was working for WBRC part-time, doing a lot of the engineering, so I've had dealings with all four. I'm just lucky. And I've had good results with Steve. I have no problem with it, or his firm, or his engineers.
So, Rick, what's your feeling and the board's feeling, the council's feeling as far as?
The council clearly voted as they did, which was to accept the Stephen Blatt proposal. It is the more, we could say, cost-effective, but it's called the low price. I have never dealt with that entity, but in that the superintendent has, we listen to him. And the council is interested in getting a good product, but not spending more than necessary to get there. So the council's vote was to accept it, subject to you people also accepting it. We know where our half of the money comes from, so we're set in that regard. If you have other questions I can answer, I'd be happy to, but I don't think you need me to go on.
Can I borrow some of your money?
Well, maybe, but the interest rate would be terrible.
Oh, Crystal, sorry.
On where the school part is going to get their money, which is 10 grand, in my opinion, they should be wait, and they should put it in the budget for next year. I mean, if you had an extra 10 grand to spend, from what I've seen, it can go through textbooks, needs to be replaced. They need a one-on-one program after school for some of the students. If you've got extra 10 grand to spend on this study right now, then it should be towards the kids. If you want to spend 10 grand, it should be redone and put into the budget for the next season. Not pull away from the kids of what they have right now.
Patsy?
I'd like to know if the townspeople are going to get a chance to vote on this $20,000. Shouldn't a special meeting be called, town meeting called, to see if this money should be spent?
Technically, it doesn't have to be done that way. At the last town meeting and at the preceding one, uh, the townspeople in the town meeting passed articles in those town meetings to allow the town council to move funds within the budget, so long as the overall budget does not change. As it stands right now, the current town budget, the year we're in, halfway through, between heat, snow removal, and police department, we're under budget. So the 10,000 is not difficult for the town side to find at long.
That isn't what I meant. I meant shouldn't this decision be left up to the townspeople, not the council and the board?
Well, I guess we can all have opinions on that. I don't see that this causes a decision. What I see happening here is we receive answers to questions. That still does not cause the town or the school to take any particular action. This council, prior to my time here, went to a consulting firm back when Georgia Pacific was leaving town, and did a study of this nature regarding public work, mobiles, recreation, et cetera. And that was not a set of ideas that had to be adopted. There were ideas that were given to the council. Here are things you might be able to do to decrease your budget, to match what your tax incomes appear they're going to look like. Some of the things in that study have been done, some have not been done. So I don't see making a study and learning answers as causing either the town or the schools to do any particular thing. I think it gives you information with which you then maybe do something or maybe don't. And that is a separate judgment.
And in reality, just being able to have someone come in and really look at our enrollments, projecting those out based on birth rates and in-out migration. And given the changes that we may see in enrollments, how are we going to best use our buildings? Whether it's going to increase or decrease, how do we best use facilities that we've got? May make for future plans. And then the third part of that, obviously, is within our facilities, what really do we need to raise funds for in order to keep them operating as efficiently as we can rather than waste dollars?
I understand that, but I think Krista's idea is the best.
I don't disagree, but at some point...
It should include, next year's budget, and it's there, and we don't have to worry about taking it from students.
Well, neither of these particular accounts are student accounts.
Yeah, I know that.
Mr. McHugh?
Just technical question. WBRC has a travel amount, none of the others do. Are we looking at the possibility of hidden costs that haven't been forwarded to us, or do these other, uh, bids have the travel built into them?
Built into them. They didn't separate it out, it's just one price for each component.
Any questions from board members?
So for each one, the AOS pros and cons is listed separately. So who technically would be doing that aspect of the study?
Uh, it would be somebody either out of the department or a retired person who's done a number of those. There are three or four individuals that I gave their names for after contacting both the NSMA and State Department. I'm guessing that the choice might be, uh, one of two people who seem to be most available at this point in time.
But it isn't somebody at Stephen Blatt Architects?
No, no, no. It'll be an educational consultant.
So for each one, it's somebody independent?
Right. Right, and my guess is that this particular company, even for Steve, will do the five-year study. That's what they do, planning decisions, and that's basically all they do. They actually did the full report for the Callis Town when we talked about breaking down, but they're pretty expensive as compared to even these bids to do the whole thing.
Does this include what you wanted, to see what it would take to put everything in one building?
Yeah, that's a part of it. That's a part of the engineering and looking at educational space and educational space needs now, based on what religion and in the future.
So what the council is looking for this evening is a vote from the board tonight? Are there any more questions?
If I might, I could offer possibly an explanational question that I hear here, what hasn't been proposed to them. We sought professional firms to do this, and we could have put this out as one to engineering firms, one to demographic firms, and another to law firms. What we tried to do was cause some professional firm to take the lead, and we sent the request for proposals to engineers, architects, demographic outfits, and law firms. These are the responses we got back. What we wanted was one professional firm to take the lead, bring us the totality of the answers, even though we knew full well there wasn't going to be anyone firm who actually did all three of these things. But I personally didn't want to have competing proposals, and then we picked two contractors who don't work very well together, and we end up with a bit of a hodgepodge as a result. So I wanted a professional firm in each case to take responsibility for the whole thing and bring us a final report. And so that has caused them, I think, to structure their bids differently, the finances of their bids differently. But in the end, it's the total prices is the total.
Any more questions?
Did we hear the total price?
Total price...
Not to exceed 20,000?
Not to exceed $20,000.
And how long will this study take? What's the timeframe?
Uh, timeframe, hopefully, will be in the next two months.
I can tell you that the council imagines that if... I often have the ability to wander right out onto the thin ice, so here I go.
Welcome to my club.
Up there at the other building, we can hear noises. Some of the noises seem to say, gee, we ought not be in the AOS. Other noises seem to say, boy, we ought to stay in the AOS. Some noises say, we ought to consolidate with other schools. And other noises seem to say we should have fewer buildings. And other noises say, oh, I don't know, maybe we don't have buildings. And there was this study done for the town. McDonald Chase was the law firm that headed up that study now a few years ago. And the council would like to... And they've come here and met with the school committee to say, what does the future look like? And there haven't been a lot of answers come forward as to what the future looks like, maybe because people don't know what the future looks like. But the council imagines that if you get these answers, then when they say to you, which they will say again in not particularly distant future, "High school board, what's the future look like?", maybe you have better ability to answer. And we actually might be a little behind the timeline, because they'd like to think we've got some of these answers on the table as we pass the next budget in June. We even have a couple of councils who'd like to pass the budget sooner than that. I don't think there's any chance that's going to happen, but that's the timetable some people would like to get on. So that's why they imagine this is a good time to do this, as opposed to wait until we have another budget in place, and then we're waiting a year after that to react to it.
At the conclusion of the study, will they make a presentation to us?
Yes.
Will the council and the school board meet together for this presentation?
I would do it as a joint presentation. It wouldn't make any sense to have them come twice.
Right, and we're not just going to get handed a booklet or a binder and...
No, I want a focus presentation. And Steve understands that. He has a great job with presentations. Sometimes I stay too near to the job and done.
And he'll be presenting on all aspects, or we, you think, will have more than one entity presenting?
He'll bring all aspects together, one before, three separate sections to record them.
Well, if there are no further questions, I propose that we should take a vote, or so I call for a motion?
What do you want, a motion?
Motion similar to what I read from the town, not to exceed the $20,000 to hire Stephen S. Blatt Architects to put together the report for us.
Okay, that'll be my motion.
Okay. We need a second.
All those in favor?
Three?
All those opposed?
One. Okay. I'll let Mr. Blatt know tomorrow morning.
Yeah, maybe you and I would form a letter of acceptance to him tomorrow when he gets up.
Okay, I'll be on the other side, but I'll get to him and track him forward. We did okay, yeah.
I did?
Yeah.
And I don't want the fact that I get up after this and leave and cause you to think that I don't find the remaining good meeting that interesting, but...
That's why we put you in there early?
Yes, and I thank you for doing that.
We figured you still had time to eat supper.
Bill?
I don't object to the study. I object to the spending of the money when it needs to be budgeted. In my opinion, it should be budgeted because it's taken away from...
I got your note.
...other stuff.
Administrative reports. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first.
Oh, how gracious.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
So the gifted and talented application, if I see it come across my desk one more time, I'm going to screen. I made the revisions regarding specific names of workshops, specific names of a course that is applicable to GT. Nothing such as the goals, the objectives, the activities, the forms, et cetera. Those are wonderful. I just had to have specific names. So what I did, I went online, and I came up with some contrived names of workshops, contrived names of courses. And as, when I left the office about four o'clock, I still hadn't heard from them. If we get this application to go through, that's $20,000. $20,444 that would be placed in the budget for next year, which is a significant amount of money. And let me tell you, over Christmas vacation, I worked, I went down to school to send it off. Nobody in the office down at DOT, so I sent it the day we returned after the holiday. So keep your fingers crossed. Working on the next year's school budget. Hopefully, it will be finalized after talking with Mr. Braun, and by the next board meeting, it will be ready. As the letter stated, that Bill had read to you previously at the beginning of the meeting, Mrs. Spencer is resigning. She did a fine job there. I'm still looking for a suitable candidate for that position. I called about three people today, and hopefully, they'll call me back tomorrow. And I sent, I gave you a copy of the letter that I sent home to the pre-kind parents as well.
Did we get any response, like on the ad, or no?
Nothing.
Nothing. I'm just trying to think of people, ask people, call people.
We advertised that in all of the universities across the state.
Personally called universities and the community colleges.
What does our substitute pool look like? Are there any?
Shallow.
Yeah, I was going to say, are there any possible candidates?
Very shallow.
It's very shallow, very, it's very limited. And again, when we're looking at that position, it has to be the right person that can fill it.
Okay. Thank you, Jane.
Because we've been on break, the only thing I have is this, um, these stats that were, we were asked to provide. One of them's the post-secondary statistics. As you can note, we have less and less kids going to four-year colleges. Most of that is because of cost. Those are the papers that I just gave you, Elaine.
Yeah, those are two together.
The bundle?
No. Should look like this.
Yep, it's right there.
This one and this one.
I don't have it.
I don't have either.
Is there an extra one?
Yep, sitting right there. I thought Becky was sitting there.
Yeah, you need the bundle.
Um, so you're seeing less and less students going to four-year colleges, and it really is about the cost. You know, you cannot afford, we're not giving out great, big, huge scholarships and whatnot. Um, most four-year colleges now are accepting the credits from two-year community colleges, so... so there's no need for a student to go and take their basic core in a four-year college. They can take it easily in a two, in a community college and transfer those credits. And you can also see at the end, more and more students are going out to the workforce. But this, I think, needs to be noted that what we're finding is, they say, we're not going to school, we're going to the workforce, and by the end of the first semester of the following year, they're applying to colleges. Because they're finding that, oh, I'm out here, yeah, I've got a minimum wage job, I'm not going with it, where my friends are all gone, there's nobody to hang out with, and we're starting to see requests right now coming in for, can you send my transcript here, can you send it there? So we are finding, and I wish we had a way of tracking or personnel that could track, you know, one year out of those kids that go into the workforce, how many of them have gone on to post-secondary, because a lot of them do. I would say fifty percent of them do go on to post-secondary, usually the WCCC. So that, you see that there. The SAT reading and math scores, as you can see, they're pretty flat. We stay pretty much in the same groove over time. Don't pay any attention to 2015 because that was actually, the students did not have to take the SATs last year. It wasn't mandated, so not all of the students took the SAT last year. That was only twenty-two of the students, so don't really pay any attention to that one.
They will be mandated this year.
They will be mandated again this year.
And it's on a Wednesday, I believe.
Yeah.
So it's not a Saturday. It's not a Friday. I didn't tease them, but I'm going to take the test.
And supposedly, they're changing the tests, so there's all kinds of changes to it, but we don't know anything about it yet, even though we're supposed to take it in April.
When they changed it to the school day for the students, did they still offer it that Saturday for other people?
No. What they do is they offer the school day one, and then about a week and a half later, well, two weeks later, because it's still on a Wednesday, they offer it for students that weren't in the, on that Wednesday. The kids' Saturday ones, they can take all the other test date ones, but not that one. And it still is not an appropriate test for all students in the school. It's a college entrance exam.
Yeah. Do we have any students who decide to take it early on a Saturday? Because kids way back, they used to take it twice.
We do. We have, most of our college-bound kids will take it at least twice, if not three times.
And they definitely see twenty to forty, twenty improvements from first to third time, and that's really the purpose for it. You have to, you have to learn how to take the test.
And we're hoping that, we just purchased the new wheel test through our gear-up funds, and we're really hoping that that will give us a more accurate measure of what our kids are doing. We can give it up to four times a year, and it will give us a much better measure of growth of our students over years. It's consistent, it doesn't change. You know, so I don't, I don't find this an accurate measure of, of anything, really. I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty consistent with our students who don't do well, don't do well on the SAT, our students who do really well, do okay on the SAT. You know, it is consistent with that, but once you put all those different parameters of special education students who have to sit through this test, that type of thing, you know, you just, it just isn't appropriate. The scores, you can't tell anything by the scores.
Why do you think they've never looked at the Accuplacer?
I don't know, and I don't know why they don't look at the ACT. If they don't want to look at the Accuplacer, look at the ACT. And the thing is, is the college board owns the Accuplacer, so what's the difference?
It would be a better mark of achievement, and it just would make so much more sense because once they're done, they're done.
Yep.
It just has never occurred to them?
Well, I think with what Maggie and I are seeing most recently coming through, and I'm going to deal with that in my report here real quick. The proficiency-based graduation standards are about to get adjusted from where the legislature originally laid it out, directed by the Department of Education, who was sort of ill progressing at that point in time, to a different standard. And including in that assessment process is the ACT, the ASVABs, and SAPs along with the other tests. So I think we're going to see a transition happen in the next four months before the legislature ends, because it's going to be in front of the legislature for changes.
But not on the SAT, because we have been told they don't care?
For studying the rest.
We're given it.
Yeah.
This is crazy.
Whether teachers have had any training, students have had any training, no matter what, we're given it for sure. Doesn't matter.
As we go forward, other multiple measures are going to be included in that proficiency-based graduation standards.
I'd rather see them use that one.
Yeah, I think it's coming, and I think we just have to wait, and we're going to talk more about that. I've been providing-
You can only hope.
...Pat with all kinds of information I filled in mailbox late this afternoon, and some more, and I'll talk about that in my report real quick, if you're ready.
No, done, Pat?
Yes, I'm finished.
Thank you. We're ready.
We're ready. Next week, fourteenth and fifteenth is the winter convocation for superintendents, during which we've been asked by the commissioner, who was just appointed by the governor and approved by the state board, Dr. Beardsley is now the real commissioner. And he has come back to the superintendents and asked us to review the, actually, there are four areas, one of which is proficiency-based graduation standards. And there is a whole lot of paperwork being passed right now, and today, we actually got some from a senator that's in the legislative history, and his own definition of proficiency-based, and it's significantly different than what's in the law presently. So after that meeting, I'll be able to report on where the superintendents, all hundred and thirty-two of them are headed with this. We're going to come to a final decision to pass it on to the commissioner to take as emergency legislation to the legislature, and that's the way it will go. So within our policies right now, we'll be talking about graduation, and I'm going to put that policy completely on hold until we know what it is, and that would be IKF. And I'd like to just, and that's really up to second reading, I'd like to put a hold on it completely until we know exactly where we're going to end up. I pass to you ESEA Conference Report Summary, which talks a little bit about what's changed in the federal funding, and it'll give you a chance for some side readings, but it's really opened it up and given the states more flexibility over how those dollars are used, and hopefully, more flexibility will be passed on to the local level, because that was the expectation from the federal government. So as that goes, it's now every student succeeds act, instead of no child will fail. Now we've changed it from a negative to a positive. I have for you, you have the budgets, the past, they came in your packet, and a short budget report, and I can talk about those two areas I was pointing to.
There is a free webinar on that ESEA, too, coming right up. I think it's January twenty-second, maybe, through Drummond and Woodson.
Twenty-first to twenty-second.
If you want to go in there, or you can come down here and watch it with us. We've signed up for it.
Twenty-second?
I think it's the twenty-second, but I'd have to look at my calendar. Just go on the Drummond and Woodson website, and it's complimentary webinar.
Yeah. You can probably get it right from home. Okay. The expenditure report that was mailed to you, that you had last meeting, actually, was through December thirty-first, budget report, which would cover the first six months of our fiscal year, or fifty percent, so this is the easiest, easiest one you have to read, and worry about percents, it'll be happy. And during the first six months, you would expect not to see too many exceed fifty percent, unless it's a annual payment or a semi-annual payment that's already been made, insurance, workers' comp, some of those things go out at different times, depending on when they're due, and may have an effect as large as than the fifty percent. The areas that, right now, would be above the fifty percent, and I don't think there'll be any issue because of their sub, they're just single accounts within an account line, happened to be guidance travel, student health services, we had a change in nurse. Nurse had more experience than the nurse who left. And as we have now, partway through the year, because of the change in family situation, picked up insurance. So those costs went up dramatically from what was budgeted. Elementary, AV, secondary communications, custodials, elementary custodial supplies, contractors, repairs, some transportation, some general supplies, and we had some teachers who elected to take courses more than what we expected. Those are the areas that look to be stressed. But in reality, as you go down through, you'll find that each of the categories, for the most part, are well above five fifty or well above fifty percent. Total fund budget, as it was voted through, was three million eight oh seven nine oh three. Expenditure to date is one million five seventy-nine three fifty-one. Remaining balance is two point two two eight, five fifty-one eighty-three, which leaves us with fifty-eight point thirty-two percent, about eight percent above where you'd expect to be, even though some of those were actual annual payments, like the roof has been paid for the year. So there's an expectation, as I said, somewhere in those accounts. The two areas that I related to, if you look under the second page in the board of the deputy, we have set aside, aside eight thousand dollars for the fees. So far, we've used fifty-two, and I don't expect we're going to use all of that eight thousand, so that's one area. And then under operation and maintenance of plant, which is on page four and five, go down to maintenance of buildings, on page five, ah, four, excuse me, about a little over halfway down, you'll notice that under building repair, there's eighteen thousand seven hundred and some dollars. We have some money we have to leave because we continue to have small heating problems and small other issues that come up, and we don't want to end up with no money. But between those two counts, I think I can find the sufficient funds to cover the needs for the study. Okay? And the maintenance of the building is really where I'd like to build, but I also don't want to go too deep there simply because if I have a malfunction of a heating system, we were a little cold this morning in a couple of places here. The high school was so cold, we'd got air in the system, we had to bleed out, and Princeton was down this morning, too. So that's what I've got questions about, the expenditure report.
My only comment is with the proficiency-based, again, sorry, diploma, that I feel that it's very, very important that these parents realize that this change in, in proficiency-based teaching, that there's a possibility that their children could go to four years of high school and only get a certificate of attendance.
Well, even that is being relooked at right now. I don't think you're going to see that happen. I think when we get to the policies, I'll explain it a little bit more, but I think you're going to even see a change in that.
Okay. I got four blank pages in my list or something?
I did, I did, too.
Okay, so maybe that just-
I just pulled them out, I thought they were for notes. And the, and-
In the packet.
The packet, proficiency-based, pull the packet. It's between Woodland Junior and Senior High and-
The copier does that every once in a while, for some reason.
Okay.
That's fine if that's the way it's moved.
We're here, Pat, notes. It just happens.
Let me just make sure they're all in here before I...
We'll give you a second. We've got policies, one, first anyway. I got a couple of things.
All of those policies?
The athletic policy.
There's something here.
It's the athletic eligibility, but we wanted to do missing.
Oh, they're missing one, too.
No, we'll just leave that one off for the night. I couldn't tell you what happened. I have no idea.
Copy machine ate it.
Like the washing machine has the sauce?
I may have it if you need it.
It's the athletic eligibility one that's got pages missing.
Ah, graduation. Student proficiency, academic eligibility.
Yep. It should have both, six pages.
Yeah. All right. What we do in that weekend, I've got a couple of things on the first readings I'd like to make, and we may have some as well before we, I mean, on the second readings before we-
Okay.
You ready?
I hope so.
Okay. First one on the second reading, adoption policies is IGA, curriculum development and adoption. And if you, you have the new policy and on the back, maybe the old, Pat showed the old policy, two changes on the new policy.
Hold on a second.
This one.
Is it this page?
It wasn't this.
IGA.
IGA.
That one, a sort of G P M.
I had that, I was reading. I'm starting with it, now I've lost it. All right, I've come to paper clips. Can I get the one I was going to turn off? Yep. It should be in the corrected policies, right?
Right. Well, maybe not. It may be still, okay, just the second readings.
Yeah, I had some notes on that, but I-
Yeah.
Is it in C on the second page?
Couple of notes, yes.
Yep.
On C on the second page, the word requirement should be recommended, so it would read, consideration of integration of foreign languages in international studies at all grades, and then recommended that all students' college preparatory minimum two years for their required. Until we know exactly what it is that is going to happen, I'd rather have that as recommended. We can go further and say that it should be required at least one year for all students, but I just shouldn't leave it as recommended at this point until we know exactly what the expectation will be. And then the second question, number E, just to clarify it, the need to instruct students about HIV slash AIDS should be there. Those are the two changes we made, and I just want to make sure that we accept it with those changes.
It's this.
That sort of looks like on the front.
And the changes are on the side. Yeah, which paper does it in? Says IGA.
IGA, should have been in-
Last one.
Last, your last mailed, last time's mailed one.
Oh, no, I don't have that, I didn't bring it.
Well, I should have it, and I don't, I can't change it either.
Should be in the group that you had in the last meeting.
Not this one we just got?
No.
No, that's why I don't have it?
Yeah. That's why I said, we'd bring your other one, too.
It's been hectic at my house.
Sure, I know. I understand. Okay, the next one is, yes?
E on the second page. At the last meeting, we talked about-
H on who you need.
Yeah, we did. We put in HIV slash AIDS. That's what I was just talking about. Yes. That was the adjustments. I want to make sure that before we do the second reading, we, all the adjustments. Now, I'll take care of retyping and redistributing them one more time.
Do you have more, more- Do you have more, more adjustments on?
Yeah, yeah, not on that one.
Okay.
IHBA is fine the way it is. The old policy's on the front of it, I mean, in the back of it, the new policy's on the front of that page. The next one was IHBAA, referral and use of general education interventions. That section that says note shouldn't even be there. You don't need that note, it's really not part of the policies, or just note that that'll be the leader dot there, and it'll just read straight through. That note was just for your understanding as we put the policy together.
Is that, that dash R?
No, that's IHBAA.
Okay.
Referral and-
General education interventions.
Yes, right.
Talking about that right there.
Yeah, the note doesn't need to be there.
Okay.
That was just for your review that we went through. IHBAA R is fine the way it is, there are no additional changes or adjustments to that one. Child fine, which is IHBAC, there's a section, note, that this wants to be taken out on the first page. Note, for all school unit situation, the contract educational services, for all students, include the language here. Well, we do have contracted students who go into school up in college, sometimes to touch the services, so that needs to be there, but the note doesn't, the note part, that line doesn't need to be there, and I'll take that out. But I wanted you to understand why that language is there. IHBAL, which is grievance procedures for persons with disabilities, is without change, that's fine. And section tribal for parent rights and student rights, IHBAL and E1 is fine, there's no changes in that. And the grievance procedure for students, which is the R, the IHBAL R is fine. And let me see here, we get to IHBG is okay, that's home equivalent construction, homeschooling. Homeschooling participation, which is the IBGHA, is okay, as it's written, no changes there. The next one, IJJ, instructional library media materials section, in favor of the school from the first. If you go on the first page to the first, second page, fourth paragraph, last paragraph on the first page. It basically says, these schools shall maintain a library media program, include books and other printed materials, multimedia materials, online and internet resources, information technology to support the curriculum. Certified library media specialists will be responsible for receiving the library media program under the supervision of, it should be building administrator, not superintendent.
Yeah. And?
I was in a large district, had one person for seven buildings that did the library media specialist, they were supposed to be.
Now, I know a lot of schools-
In this particular case, they were supposed to be administrator, yes.
Do not have a certified library media specialist, so how are they going to get around not having that in there?
There is supposed to be at least a certified media specialist responsible for the system, whatever it is, K through twelve.
So you're saying that-
The real problem is, quite honestly, that there's a shortage of certified media specialists in the state of Maine because there's no program, the certified media specialists in Maine at this point in time. The nearest one is Massachusetts.
Yeah, so is-
Yeah.
And where you really get dinged is if you're an accredited school, if you go through that process, then you get really dinged, but if you're not an accredited school, you don't usually get dinged on it.
There's no state requirement saying you have to have it, but it's a recommendation that we'd like to have that in place.
Is it both elementary and high school?
No, we have to have at least one to oversee the media, period.
When I finished, they didn't even require the praxis.
Yeah, I know.
They did later, but took it anyway, because-
But the, and as you said, the University of Maine, Orono, library had a pretty good program at one point in time, and it went, and I guess it disappeared because there was nobody going in the library sign, it's basically, they did it-
They were doing more out of Augusta.
And they were doing it out of Augusta. And then, that dissipated because nobody was taking it, and there is no place in the state of Maine or in New Hampshire. I could go to Massachusetts, and then the next one is Pennsylvania. So if you try to hire somebody, you're going to be hiring somebody from out of state, because that's not where you're going to get somebody. And quite honestly, that, the salaries we have here as compared to what you can get in Massachusetts or Pennsylvania, you're not going to drag too many of them.
No, I mean, the program I took was out of South Carolina, and it qualified me for thirty-three states, so why would I?
If you do-
If I was young, why would I stay and freeze?
Oh, well, when you put a double year, you can break quickly by going almost anywhere. Okay, the full-on for citizens challenge for media is fine, basically the same as what you had before. Got to keep up with myself. IJNDV, which is the student internet policy, is without any significant change from where it was before. The acknowledgement form is the same as it was. The internet rules are basically the same as they were, just laid out clean, with the word daily for limit. Field trips and travel, which is IJOA, is got a small change in that. On page three, I was hoping for input for the first reading, I guess, and I didn't catch it. The top of the page, ah, excuse me, bottom of page five, ah, two, the board or the superintendent board must approve in advance any trip involving out-of-state travel. I would like that to be the board would approve out-of-state travel because of the sending insurance impact. And you should, if we're sending students out of state, you should know that.
Yeah, yep, I like that.
Okay? We don't need the distance, we just need to know that it's out of state. And on the top of the next page, I'm not concerned about a timeframe, but for it to come to a board level, you're going to have to have at least two weeks, depending on when the request comes through. And I would hope if it's a trip that they have to raise funds for, or looking for funds, you have more than two weeks.
I, I think it should be more than two weeks, for sure.
Well-
I mean, you're going to travel, it should be well in advance planned.
Okay, so how about, use the words well in advance?
That's two weeks.
Well, it could be.
I think it needs to have those.
You need a time, you don't have time now. Okay, what's your suggestion?
I think two, I think two weeks isn't bad, because if, they're going to plan a trip, if it comes sooner than the two weeks, then it's no big deal, but you don't want it to come a week before, so two weeks.
A trip to Dallas for, I don't know, whatever, is okay, or a trip from the elementary school for the elementary children to visit the fire station, that's one kind of trip.
And we don't bring those to the board.
We don't bring those, we're talking about a significant trip here.
They like the senior trips.
In case of that, they have that pre-planned, well in advance anyways.
Well, in advance, right.
So a month in advance, at least a month.
A month in advance.
Okay.
A month in advance.
We'll use a month. And if we run into issues, we'll deal with those separately, and we can come back to the policy if we need to.
What about K with the ratio?
Good to get there in a second, I wanted to take care of D first.
Okay.
Of the two, I'd rather use the second language, rather than criteria for slacking students, how about criteria for student participation?
Sounds better.
Because typically, it's based upon behavior and grades or other standards. Then, down to K, minimum ratio of adult supervisors to children.
It really depends on who you're taking. If you're taking a group of seniors, your ratio of adults to children is not the same as it is if you're taking a bunch of seventh graders.
Right. We can make this variable, we can say K through eight, or K through whatever, one level. What about significant field trip here, and I'm talking about, again, to the fire station. Your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm thinking elementary, if it's a significant field trip, I feel one to five. I have small kids, and I want to be sure that they're well attended.
Okay.
At grade seven and eight, we take two to thirty-five.
Okay.
And nine through twelve, we might take one to twenty-five.
Okay. Any input?
What about sixth grade?
I still like-
Six, seven, eight.
You still like that one to five?
Yes.
Okay, so one to six.
Yeah.
I'm still thinking one to twenty-five in high schools, a stretch.
We go to college fairs with one person.
Yeah.
A lot of times with the whole class, thirty-six kids, forty kids, one person, don't have any issues.
Well, when you get to the college fair, they're broken down into groups of about six to eight per group as they travel around, so it's really between here and there, and then it changes when you get to the college fair.
Yes. And seven, eight, two, wherever.
And, as I said, if we run into issues, we can always come back and revisit, that's not a big deal. Okay?
Yep.
I'll take care of those. And let's see, the next one I had, that I wanted to just touch on, IJOC is okay, ILA is okay, ILD was okay, IKF, graduation requirements, I'll put that one on hold.
Okay.
So that one, we won't do at this point until we get more clarification. And IMDB is fine, so that takes care of it. So in that second reading, with the adjustments, to IGA, IHBAA, IHBAC, IJJ, IJOA, and without IKF, I would recommend second reading for those policies.
Did we do IHBG?
IHB, I H B, lucky, gotta get that, GA, yes.
Okay, I have questions there.
Okay, then we go back to it. They're alphabeticals.
Not in my file.
Oh, yeah. IHGA.
IHBG.
There you go, homeschooling participation.
Right. Okay, there's, there's a whole section that was left out from the old policy, and it was about figuring out academic credit, and is there another policy that does that for us now?
It will, as we look at what the graduation standards are going to be.
Okay, and IHBG has something about figuring out class rank?
That will be addressed in academic recognition.
Right.
So there'll be another policy that'll take care of that, too?
Correct. Yes.
And like weight, blind classes to determine rank when they come from home school and such?
Yes, that'll be separate.
So that was left out because we don't need it anymore?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes. It'll be-
I don't think we address that in the new policy, a home school.
No, you don't. I address the home school, you take care of the ranking and the graduation credits.
IHGAs.
Different.
IHBGA. It's the home school participation one, is what I have questions about.
Because if they're not, if they haven't been in the school for two years, they're not eligible to participate in, well, they can participate, but they're not eligible for class weight anyway, class rank. That's the way the current policy works.
Okay?
Do they add that?
That's a different policy. It's just general for any student.
Yeah, if you adhere to the old policy, there's a whole lot of-
So if someone transferred their senior year, they wouldn't qualify?
So that's, we're going to, we're going to put a hold on that? There will be new policies that will take care of it.
Correct.
So we're going to put a hold on that?
IHB.
No, we're going to take it as it is, there'll be additional policies that will probably be parts that are missing, separate.
Okay, seriously.
All right?
I mean, it's all there, they just-
It'll all be there.
I just want to make sure that there was going to be something that would regulate that, and there will be.
Okay. Okay, does that cover all of them?
Yes, all of second reading.
So you need, we need to adopt, we're going to adopt these.
With the adjustments.
With the adjustments.
And without IRA.
IKF, I thought.
IKF, excuse me, yes, IKF, I'm looking at my next list.
Okay. So, I guess I'm calling for a motion.
Yes.
I'm calling for a motion to adopt policies, IGA, IHBA, IHBAA, IHBAA dash R, IHBAC, IHBL, IHBL dash E one, IHBL dash R, IHBG, IHBG, A, IJJ, IJJ dash E, IJNF, IJNDB dash E, IJNDB dash R, I'm going to kill Andy, IJOA, IJOC, ILA, IKE dash one, actually, it's not a dash.
IKE.
IKE, ILD, and IMDB.
Correct.
I'll make that motion, so that nobody else will have to say those again.
I'll second it.
Elaine? Do you vote?
All those in favor?
Thank you.
And I have to pass those across. Okay, the first reading policies.
Okay, and I'm sure there'll be changes as we go through these, but for first reading, I'd like to put on the table, admission of homeless students, which is JFADB, drug and alcohol used by students, basically the same as it is right now, that is JICH, and maybe changes, data loss from departments to eliminate throughout it. Same way with the weapons laws, violence in school, and safety. And discipline, area removal of students with disabilities administered, procedure, which is JKF dash R. JRA has been, I had to do a little correction, so I'm going to give you a new JRA, so please destroy the one you have and put that in its place. There was a small correction in the section that was eliminated.
Picture that, boy.
All right. JRE, annual notice of special ed records and information required, and that's basically the same as it was, and JRA dash R, the regulation for posting that. Then compulsory attendance, I have a small change in that one, so if you find your JEA, and simply eliminate yet, and replace it with this, because on the second page, I believe, let me look real quick, was, was missed in the re-typing. Yeah, let's see what that was, it was missed here. No, on third page, F, education disruption resulting from homelessness, planning psychiatry, hospitalization, so on, was skipped, and it needs to be there for excusable absence under the law.
What was that?
The change was, on the third page, F was eliminated, and the first one I gave you, for some reason, we didn't get in it, and it needed to be there under the law, because I reviewed it.
Folded up.
So, throw your first one away. So throw your first one away, teach that one. The next one is JRA, student educational records and information. There's an error in number A and directory information. Making the changes on the first, second, third, fourth line, in parentheses, it says MSAD third, you should say Baileyville.
I don't have JRA.
It's bad.
Right. Should be there.
There's only two pages.
It's only two pages.
Back on MSAD, JEA, when you added, and we don't have the prices. Yep.
Yes, yes.
It's not listed.
Not listed, but should be there then.
This is JRA you're discussing?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it should be, it should be listed. Because it's not a hospital.
Before compulsory attendance.
Crisis. I'll do that, the next. So I'll do carefully. Crisis, round line.
JEA.
Yeah, I got it.
No, I was telling Elaine.
Unplanned hospitalization medical condition subject in there someplace. Crisis. JRS. What's it called, crisis? Intervention.
Crisis unit, crisis unit.
Yes. Intervention.
Yeah.
I'll add that in, yes. I got to mark this as.
It's gone.
Add. Page three, yeah. Thank you. I'll have that ready for you, that's changed. And like I said, JRA, in that fourth line, there's a typo, sad thirty in there. The next one is JEA, it's pretty much same as the past, except for under the first section, D has been added, it's new, for compulsory attendance, ages. A person who has already articulated, this is new, beginning with, uh, aged out yet. So for a thirteen-year-old to graduate, it's just because they're under seventeen, they don't still have to attend. JFC is as it was. And bullying is as it was.
And if anybody from the board or parents or community members would like to join the dropout prevention committee, feel free.
So I'd like to put those up for first reading?
Yep. Do you need a-
Just a motion for them.
Motion.
Dr. McHugh has a question.
Okay.
Here's two. Don't ask me which policies they are, you want to pass. There are two issues that I saw as I was reading these. The first is, you are required to give out name, address, and telephone number to colleges and military recruiters if they ask for them. I have some serious reservations about telephone numbers. It's almost like handing out telephone numbers to solicitors on the phone. Almost anybody can start pounding people, maybe they don't want to be pounded.
We actually get papers home at the beginning of the year that we have to sign stating if our children do not want to be contacted with the military or the school and they sign these papers stating that they do not want to be contacted.
Okay, I didn't see that.
Under the, under the law, we have to show that we're going to collect those or have that general, it's called general information available. But we also send out at the beginning of the year an opt-out for parents, which we're required to do as well. So on one side, you're required to collect the information and on the other side, we're required to allow people to opt-out.
Okay, now, the second issue I noticed was health information versus confidential health information. Where I come from, all health information is confidential.
He has a point.
It's, you're right, but the health information in this particular case that's kept, has to do with allergies to foods.
Did it state that, though?
We need to know, but it's how, it's general health information. Those are the things, bee stings.
Peanut butter.
Those kinds of things.
It says right here.
I think it ought to be specified because general can be interpreted by different people different ways.
But it says significant threat to the health and safety of the student or other individuals.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand. That would go to vaccinations. The health of other individuals, other than the vaccination, what would they be?
Peanut butter allergy.
Yep, peanut butter allergies.
Three individuals.
But if another student has peanut butter-
If another student had peanut butter or nuts in the same general facility-
Facility and that student touches it.
I thought you banned or pretty well eliminated peanuts.
Not all, not all schools are.
Not all schools. Well, we could have that policy here, but if our students went to play an activity, math team, sports activity, in another school where it wasn't.
Yep.
You still got the same problem.
Well, there's, there is the dissemination of information to the other school that we have a student who had a peanut allergy or a something allergy.
Or a special diet.
As opposed to, we have a student by the name of who has-
Not, not information of direct nature, information of indirect nature always, yes.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
We're not allowed to reveal that information. But a general statement that we have somewhere would avoid the problem.
See, we only disclose that information to those that need to know. So if we have a, if we have a student who has seizures, we would disclose that information to any classroom teacher that he might have, the lunchroom people, to be aware of that.
Or the bus driver.
So it's only to people that need to know the information.
Right, it's always on a need-to-know basis.
It's not the last.
That's it. I'll look at that before we get to second reading of that.
On JFABD, Bill?
Yeah.
Are you talking about the one on the surface? Are you talking about the one on the-
The second paragraph is, is part of the no child left behind act. Now, that's all going to change if every child succeeds.
Right, at this point, it's still there. It'll be changed as we go forward, I'll have to adjust that later on.
So we'll-
But right now, it's okay.
Go through this and then have to-
Yeah.
Come back to it when they make the adjustment.
When they make that change, yes.
Yep.
It's an ever-changing process. I'll get that one from the attorney in the next month, be watch.
Yeah.
So I got a motion, please, for first reading and then we can still make the adjustments before we accept it.
I make a motion for the first reading for policies. JFABD, JICH, JICIA, JKF, JKF-R, JRA, JRA-E, JRA-R, JEA, JFC, and JICK.
Thank you.
And do we need to, do we need to vote on this?
Nope, nope.
We have just made the motion.
We gave the vote, this is next, it's in the second reading. It hasn't become anything until then.
See, this is what I did. Second reading back?
Yeah, well, I'll do that when I get home.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. We are down to-
I'm more organized than I am.
Number nine.
Number nine. Proficiency-based learning policies, Patty.
Okay, so we, we presented the policies that we are, are looking at for proficiency-based education, beginning with next year's ninth graders. We asked at a couple of the past two meetings, we've asked that if you have questions, concerns, things that you think should be changed, whatever, that you bring them so that we can rework them. I didn't have anyone that made any of those types of suggestions. You have four, well, you don't have four in your packet because one wasn't printed off, so I just printed it and what did I do with it? God, too much paper.
Can you print it, send it?
No, it's right here.
So you didn't give it back to me, so?
Yeah, I gave yours back.
You did?
I did.
Yep, I got it right here in front of me. Thank you.
So that's the, so you do have four, but I only want to look at three because graduation requirements, I attach to your, to the front of your packet, a paper that looks like this. Okay? This is the recommended, this is what the superintendent's, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill. This is what the Southern Maine superintendents, who have a lot of power in the legislature, and this is what our superintendents will be looking at, well, all the superintendents in Maine will probably be looking at this within the next week.
Next week.
And this is their recommendations for how to change the proficiency-based diploma requirements to better suit our students because the way it's written right now, they're figuring, I think Bill told me today, that less than thirty percent of our students are going to graduate with a diploma. So this is what the, the superintendents will be recommending to the legislative committee and I think that there's going to be an emergency legislative meeting in order to try to pass some of this through. And what it basically says is that students will need to meet the standard in four areas. Math, English language arts, science and technology, and career education and development. And then in the other areas, they will be able to partially meet the standards and still receive a regular diploma. On the next page, it kind of outlines for you what that looks like. What are, what are the standards and performance indicators that would be the most important? And if we had to give evidence of that in proficiency, what would that look like? So that's showing you that. I was kind of surprised that it left off social studies as one of the ones that you had to meet standings in and put career and development instead because career development really can be done through the guiding principles. So I was kind of surprised at that, but I'm sure they'll tweak it anyway. And if you look on the last page, that talks a little bit about the guiding principles and some of the recommendations that they're making about how we can prove that kids have met the guiding principles. So until they've done a little bit more work on this, and Elaine, you can see where they're using the Accuplacer score as a measure of proficiency. And the PSAT and the ACT. So until we know where this is going to go, I think holding off on our graduation requirements is a smart move right now, even though it's not going to change what we require of students, it's just going to change what we require students meet in that category-
Correct.
-prior to graduation. That's the only thing that it's really going to change, okay? So the other three really are not going to change. The academic eligibility, it's not going to affect that in the least. It's not going to affect honors, honors and grade point average for academic recognition, it's not going to affect that in the least. And it's not going to affect how we're going to do our grading and reporting. Those three things aren't going to be affected. We really need to do the first reading on these policies. I know it's not set up for first reading this, this time, but we really have got to do the first reading, we've got to move forward on the-